I call this meeting to order.
Roll call for this city council meeting of Wednesday, March 21st, 2018 at 7:30 PM. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Shav, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge allegiance.
Madam President.
Yes.
If we could, during our moment of silence, if we could remember Bill Jaren, who was the government liaison for Pennalec, passed away unexpectedly at the age of 43, I believe, and it's a terrible loss to the community. He also served the city on the, I believe, the sewer authority and the airport authority. So if we could remember him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in theness all and liberty and justice for all.
Approval of minutes from the city council meeting of Wednesday, March 7th, 2018, and bills for payment on March 16th and 23rd, 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Murzky, Mrs. Shav, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington.
Are there any repository sales? Are there any repository sales? Last call. Are there any repository sales?
Thank you very much. Yes. Eerie is a nonprofit group which is serving the downtown core area of the city. And as you probably know, that they have been very active in revitalizing several schools, Erie High School being one of them last summer, and they're going to be doing a couple of renovations and fixing up, shall I say, this coming summer. What we are looking for is, we are looking for a repository sale on a site at 623 East 8th Street. And this site we are using as a parking lot, and there is a house behind it on 625 East 8th Street. That will be coming up shortly, and what we want to do is we want to renovate that and use that as what we're calling a community house. Now, by house, we're not talking about the living place. What we're talking about is a meeting place for the community. And it's not going to be large. We're looking at approximately 20 people so that it can be kept to a narrow focus on a small community. So if they have problems and questions of the school board or the school superintendent, that he can meet with them down there. The same with council members, the mayor, somebody from the fire department, perhaps the police department, so that they feel comfortable where they are. And I think that's a very good thing. And so what we have been doing is putting together, we have drawings on the house in the parking lot, and we are asking for approval on this lot, which is 625, I'm sorry, 623 East 8th Street.
Okay. Thank you. That takes us into citizens to be heard.
Good evening. My name is Howard Bibbs. Sometime I'm known as the mayor on Chestnut Street. I'm here today, there's one thing that I would like to mention, is that I'm very appreciative of our mayor and how he has been performing thus far and what he's doing in our city. I'm very happy that he has hired some younger people within his administration, because I think that will be like a calling card of other young people to let them know that Erie, you can stay here in Erie and succeed versus leaving Erie, okay? What I would like to see is these young people be pushed out to the forefront whereby these younger people can actually see them. We know they're here. I know they're here. I want these young people to know that they're here. And I think that'll be a big push for this administration. I'm very proud of this administration. I've never said that before in my life. But I like what the mayor is doing, and whatever I can do, I'm here to help the mayor. I also, without mentioning any names, I went to an exception, I don't want to call it dinner, but it was a gathering, and the person there was running for an office, and he sits amongst you guys. And the things that that individual was saying that day, if all of those things, I know he or she cannot do those things alone, people is going to have to be there to help that individual to succeed, to do those things. But the things and the plans that was laid out, I just felt good on the inside just hearing it, just hearing it. You know, I somewhat know the background, you know, where these individuals come from and so forth, parents and so forth. And I know that if we can help elect these individuals into that particular office, I think it would be a big push for our town. Secondly, I just want to read something. I am a landlord. Right now, I have a lady that live in Maryland. She picked up the lease for a lady that's living upstairs. Her partner passed away the first of the year. And this lady, bless her soul, she just said, "Well, I'm going to do this shit for," because it was, the partner was her uncle. She said, "Well, I'm going to do this shit for this lady," because that was his partner. But I have something that I would like to read, and I'm not going to read the whole thing. But it says, "I will include the water bill amount with the rent for April, which you will have on time. Let me know about renters inspection fee. Let me know about garbage and sewer." And then she says, "Boy, they show nickel and dime you guys in Erie." Now, this lady lives in Maryland, and I talk to her a lot on the computer, okay? I just hope that this administration will be able to stabilize what has gone on in the city of Erie, whereby everybody can get a little breather, get a little breather, you know? Because if we can get a breather and start keeping our dollars in our pockets whereby we can do something else, I think it would help this here town also, okay? As far as, and I'm still arguing with, well, I shouldn't say arguing, but I still go to the school district. I'm not satisfied with the school district. I feel that they're going to get this money and it's not going to be used how it should be used. I know that they're asking questions of the parents, and they had a symposium at two different places. You know, that's all well and good. But I think they need to talk to the young people. They need to talk to those young people up here at Erie High. They need to find out what's really going on up there. I know what's going on up there, because it's in my neighborhood. People talk to me about what they see at that school. Everything is not like people want you to understand it to be, okay? And just keep that in mind. Just use your imagination, and whatever you can imagine is probably happening. Number two, the building, I went to that school. The fire code in that school was 4,000 people when I went there. I don't think it's any bigger. I think this is just a plan for something to come three years down the road, where they're going to ask the people in this town to put an $80 million extension to that building. When we should keep those six schools within our neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Diane Esser, 923 Long Point Drive, Erie, PA. You're probably thinking, "What is, that woman is still here?" But it's for oh-so-many reasons, and I'll make it brief. I have the Children's Science Environmental Program that I'm really, really proud of, and that's why I'm still here, because, and the bottom line is, I have always said I would do this environmental program for one child. I wrote a book that is distributed to the hospitals and cancer hospitals for children who sit in chemotherapy chairs for three hours. So I take health issues, environmental issues extremely seriously. My mother passed away from cancer when I was 16. You kind of have to, my background a little bit maybe explains why I'm still here. So at 17, I was pretty much on my own. So I, cancer, cancer victims, people fighting cancer, that's, and my mom, she called me on the carpet if I was doing something wrong. So I got a little bit of her sitting here, too. But that being said, one of the things that both, I'm sure you're aware of the New York Times article, and you're aware of an Erie Reader article that just came out, and one of the things that just struck my heart was that this, the Viaduct Bridge, which is, of course, what I'm talking about, the Viaduct Bridge was constructed because of a child that passed away because of the tracks and the danger with the tracks. So I decided today to go into the neighborhood. I'd written a little something for the kids, and I had a chance to meet a couple people and talk to them. Met Charlie today, and I said, "What's your voice on the viaduct?" And I'm sure he'd be, nobody would ever be here. I said, "Charlie, what's your opinion on the viaduct?" And he goes, "Keep it." So it just was a good feeling to be there, and because I know that my fight was to look at this whole matter, get a public hearing, address the environmental issues of particular matter, which I feel that the children should never be relegated to that bayfront highway. No one, no person, you don't have enough green infrastructure there. You don't have it. This whole state is negligent, and they know it. So there's big step up. I was a presenter at the state conference at State College this last week. So we know we don't have what we should here. So that's why I'm here. In all good conscience, I have to stay here because it's about the kids. For me, they're not here with their voice. There's going to be a little event on the Viaduct for Kids this weekend. By the way, the New York Times actually had, you know, the kids will jump those tracks once you have that done. If there's not a plan in place to get safe transport, then, I know there's issues of figures and whatever, but Adam Trot, he can bring, he can pound that home again, too. Listen to Adam. But I wrote a little piece, so I was in the neighborhoods today with the kids. So I'm going to make this kind of brief. I wanted to, you'll all be able to share this, because I'm going to send this little invite. I'll give this to you so you can pass around. So it's brunch on the bridge. You're all invited. Love to see your faces, because this has become like a family party in my mind. So it's the McBride dinosaur song. My son has, says I have a great fault, and that's that I romanticize everything. Sorry, it's what I do. So I see the McBri, I see that viaduct, and I see a dinosaur. So I wrote this for the kids. "I am as big as a dinosaur, ginormous and tall. I am the one who has carried them all. With the east siders whose foots I know, footsteps I know, with them in voice I continue to grow. For the children and families I give safe passage. Keep them safe and healthy is my message. This dinosaur knows I can be saved with repair and lift a city from lost hope and despair. With my dinosaur heart, this is my song. Tearing me down is so very wrong. Our words are to let me live and stay strong. So their footsteps I will feel for an eternity long." Nothing is done until the dinosaur is gone and the last of his demolition smoke wafts into the universe, where his memory will linger in the heart of Erie history. And one valiant fight is won, because winning is how the fight was fought, and it was a fight for health and safety for our children. Thank you.
Good evening, Erie City Council and Mayor Administration and fellow Erieites. Jason Brendel, 4131 McCollan Avenue, Erie, PA, 16510. For the past couple weeks, I've been doing a self-discovery about my fight. I know every citizen here wants to feel included, wants to feel part of the process. Connect plus respect. Great Erie lines for equality. Organizations that are working inclusively for the greater good, the common bond. Erie, our home sweet home. Now, I was at the Jefferson Educational Society, Erie Public Schools visionary meeting, public meeting, and it breaks my heart. 20 years ago, I came out, I graduated from the new building of Erie East High, and in the Erie School District, in high school, 30% of the students agree that there is harassment, bullying, death threats to the LGBT students in the Erie School District. In the middle school, 40%. Performance Fact Incorporated did a student survey, and they compiled all this information together that I have. In the school year 2016 to 2017, bullying went up from 0% to 9%. Zero to nine. And I've been talking about gay conversion therapy. Those students, those youth are at home trying to study, maybe become the next Nick Adams, graduate of Mercyhurst High School and fellow Eryite, but they may have a tough time, maybe because of what's happening at home. I advocate for, to connect plus respect about the LGBT community. We really need to have a gay conversion therapy ban addressed today, and it begins with us, working inclusively to make sure that the youth are not treated indifferent, excluded, bullied, threatened, thrown in the locker, or even their faith and hope in our society, in our democracy. That's one. Two, College Plaza on East 38th Street, their curb, when you go in, is not ADA compliant. I've talked about this, and for bikers and people that are on bikes, they have to go down, and it hits their tires. So if you look at College Plaza on East 38th Street, the curbs from the East 38th into their property, it needs to have the ADA compliant. So that is one. And I think I'm going to give Erie CPR a nice shot in the arm some love. The Parking Authority, I hear, in UPMC Hamlet, wants to build a parking lot just down the street, four blocks north. That's proposed. Why don't we take that money? Give it to Erie CPR and let them possibly do what they need to do for the Lower East Side. The McBride Viaduct. Am I not correct? So, I mean, I was on the fence about that, but it's all about inclusion, working together for the common bond, common purpose, and love, not just for the citizens, but love for each and every one that calls Erie home. And now, this other thing that I would like to talk about is this Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index that I've given you guys. On here, it has LGBT liaisons in city executive office. We can score five points for that if maybe I am appointed or hired, but this is sad. And I know we have LGBT organizations and LGBT leaders working with Erie, the city, and the county, but it's high time that we work inclusively for, not just for the LGBT community, not just for Lower East Side, but for all. Thank you.
Hello. Art Lee, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie, PA. Good evening. I have a few wishes, as I usually do. The Erie CBA Coalition, earlier this week, met with the mayor and some of his staff about LERTA enhancements. I know he wants to do LERTA. LERTA's indeed may be good for the string of building and development residential enhancements, but we've offered some additional items that could even make that more applicable when it comes to jobs and wages for the citizens of Erie. You've all received information. I want you to give that serious consideration. I hope the mayor reads it. I hope the staff reads it. We think that it's worthy to incorporate. Second of all, I want to talk about the bridge. I've come to the conclusion that the mayor is right. He is right with the information that he has. He is an honorable individual. I respect him. I respect what he's trying to do, as I do all you folks. You have made decisions, and you always do, with high integrity. I'm not doubting that, based on what you know. And that's all you can do. But I'm here to say, as you've heard it before, there is information you don't know. There's information that can be questioned and answers that can be given that will never be provided if we don't get answers to those questions. And so once again, I'm asking for a public meeting at which there is accountability. Last week, I talked about accountability. Joe, Mayor Joe, is in the business of accountability, as you all are. I believe your people of high integrity. There's a lot of good things going on. I was at a planning meeting this afternoon. Brian Bizarro had one with a bunch of the state legislators. Bob was there. We heard a lot of good things. There are some things that I didn't like, but in the main, it's good to see all the roads, the oars in the water pulling in the same direction. But we need to give people a voice. We need to have answers to some questions when they're on the record, and there are answers, and there are solutions that perhaps you haven't heard, and you don't want the wrecking ball to hit the bridge if that's the wrong thing to do. And I submit that we need those answers, and that won't happen unless we have that public meeting. And so, look, there is no harm and there's no disgrace in giving it a second look. If you had cancer, you'd go get a second opinion. If you had hard problems on something significant, you'd go get a second opinion. Let's get some answers. Things have changed since 2010, 2012, 2014. We have a planning commission. We have mechanisms in place now where there can be answers given to questions that weren't there. Give it a chance. Let people have a voice. Give some hope. Thank you.
My name is Freda Tepper. I live at, just a second, I want to turn my timer on. My name is Freda Tepper. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. I have a couple things I want to talk about. I would like to request, I don't know if it has to happen through the mayor's office or by the city council adding it, but the city would benefit from having a bicycle pedestrian committee, a committee specifically to address bicycle pedestrian issues, not disability issues, not zoning, not planning, bicycle pedestrian issues. They could comment on planning, on zoning. They could hear people's concerns about snow removal, about traffic lights. They could facilitate communication with the city about hearing and acting on these complaints. And they could work with citizens and nonprofits and other groups to secure grants and funding. This is actually a very, very common thing in cities. I lived in Wallawalla, Washington, which is quite a bit smaller than Erie, and we had a bicycle pedestrian committee there. I think it would be totally appropriate in a city where the plan says we should be pedestrian friendly, where we're trying to attract more young people. I also want to comment on how the city doesn't always provide adequate, timely notification about meetings in a place that people can find out about them. There's a mayor's roundtable on disability, and they went from quarterly to monthly meetings, and the only reason I knew about it was because a member told me about it. I don't know anywhere that it was posted, and if it was somewhere, then I'd sure like to know about it. There are some other meetings and agendas and minutes on the homepage under important documents, but the mayor's disability roundtable going from quarterly to monthly was not there. We need better ways that people can find out what's going on in this town. And there are ongoing concerns with the access during construction and the elimination, and I know that the city traffic engineer is working on it, but Erie Insurance continues to not be following ADA requirements. And there are businesses, such as Teresa's Deli on 32nd and Green Garden, that continues to block their sidewalk with huge snowberms that they've created by plowing their driveways. As to the viaduct, I see my friend and fellow researcher, Ms. Allen, has a huge folder. She wants us to see that she's very knowledgeable about the viaduct and that she's done a lot of reading and research. I will bet there's nowhere that you can find that has analyzed in the feasibility study or the process the impact of pedestrians being forced to walk the Bayfront Connector concerning water qual, air quality, air pollution, exposure to air pollution, exposure to noise, the psychological impacts of having to walk along the traffic, and the impacts of safety of the crossing the 12th and the Bayfront Connector. It's not in there anywhere, Liz. And I don't mean to be unpleasant, and you know that. Those point to the failure of process of the viaduct. There was a study done based on purpose and needs that did not consider pedestrian safety in the north-south direction. Nowhere considered the air quality, noise, psychological safety impacts. There was a NEPA decision, and Autumn Kelly from Pendott said, after I told them, "Where is your reconsideration?", they said, "We're doing it now." But they made that change about the sidewalk in the summer of 2016. They're doing it now because I brought it up, but she hasn't told me what they determined and by what, there should be re-notification of the NEPA decision and public comment. This is just one example. And the current rumors I hear around is, it's all our fault because we should have come up with the money. We had the time to come up with the money. No one is going to give a project money that is slated to be demolished. The Erie CPR has no reason nor desire to own the bridge. It's a city bridge, but we're happy to partner. You guys decide you're going to back off on the construction, and I'll be glad to buy some tiles in memory of my deceased family members. And lastly, it's time that we have a hotline that we can respect. If we're going to have a taxpayers' hotline, it should, it should be something that we can be proud of. We should not have a non-city employee sitting up there spouting off, "Here's personal philosophy" on the city's dime or time. Let's have some new, new people sitting up there. Thank you. Let's have some new people sitting up there. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is TJ Sandell, 2712 Plum Street. A very nice gentleman in the back thought I was the new police chief, which was very flattering, but I'm not. I'm the chairman of the city's land bank, the newly formed land bank, and I'm also on the board of directors for the Redevelopment Authority. The reason why I'm here tonight is to give city council a brief update on what's going on with the land bank and a dual purpose about our funding. What's happening right now in the last, it's been about a year since you passed the ordinance. The land bank's board has been solvent and it's been solidified. We've passed our bylaws. All of our work guidances are done. That's all in place. Jay Alberstadt, one of the board members, he's an attorney, I'm sure you're familiar with him. He's written all of our intergovernmental agreements with the school district. The school district has received our intergovernmental agreements. And the county has also received our intergovernmental agreement, which we are meeting tomorrow with county government to talk about the tax abatement part of that intergovernmental agreement, which we are hopeful will be put through county council and approved. As far as the staffing goes to the land bank, we came up with an idea that was fiscally responsible. We felt that the land bank did not require full-time employees, so we wrote an agreement with the Redevelopment Authority to staff the land bank at a part-time basis, where they would bill the land bank for hours used from the Redevelopment Authority. So that's a very fiscal, responsible thing that we did there. Basically, with our intergovernmental agreements ready to go, we're waiting for approval from the school district, which we are hopeful will get here in the next couple of weeks. Also with the county, very quickly. The problem that we face right now is funding. And according to the county and the county executive, the gaming revenue money will not be available paid to the county until any significant amount will not be paid to the county until December of this year. So, right now, the land bank is kind of stuck with its wheels not turning because of funding. And we have some administrative costs, which gracefully the Redevelopment Authority has absorbed those costs. And Jay Alberstadt has done free work for the land bank to help us get into motion. So the second reason why I'm here is I would like to respectfully request from council a grant for $5,000 for administrative costs and insurance for the land bank. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for allowing us to speak. My name is Dorothy Jordan. I live at 3436 West 10th Street in Mill Creek Township. And I am here to speak on behalf of saving that historical beautiful architectural wonder, the McBride Bridge. The reason I'm here is because for years I've listened to Kent Springhurst begging in blizzards for people to come out and support him. And I've also watched Father Jerry Pescaro from St. Anne's Church begging for years for people to come out and support saving the McBride Bridge. I was sitting on my very comfortable couch a few weeks ago and happened to read a quote from Dave Chappelle that says, "There are those few who abandon comfortable circumstances and stand up to help those with no voice and speak for them." I live in very comfortable circumstances, but I can't stand the thought of some child being killed trying to get to school and doing nothing to stop this insanity. When I heard the Miami Bridge collapse the other day, I thought, "Oh, rats. There goes our chances, because now they'll say, 'See? The bridge collapsed and killed all these people.'" And then I heard this was a brand-new bridge. And the reason the bridge was put up was because there were so many young university students who were killed trying to cross from one side of the road to the other side of the road to get to school. And I thought, "Yay, that's exactly the situation we're facing." And I do not want to sit by and be one of the silent majority who does nothing in my comfortable home to save a child. And it will happen. The poor have no power. They can only hope. And I also read a quote from Shakespeare's play Hamlet that made me think about the bridge or this situation, and that quote is, "Something is rotten in Denmark." That quote is used to describe the corruption or situation in which something is terribly wrong. And there's something terribly wrong with the powers that be who are so anxious to destroy something that could be a potential boon for the east side of Erie. I live on the west side, and I know that if this was in Mill Creek or Frontier and Erie Day School children were going to have to cross railroad tracks and the Bayfront Highway, there is no question that it would be saved. I just don't understand the rush to doing this when all these poor people are asking for is a public hearing. And the figures are so skewed, I'm just now finding out about redlining. And if there was ever a case of redlining, I would call it this case. And I'm ashamed that we are of such narrow-mindedness that we can't see our way through to at least giving these people and Father Jerry a chance to prove that we can turn this bridge and the whole east side into an asset of Erie. I called the Highline Bridge in New York, my mind is going to collapse. I called the Highline Bridge in New York City, and it just so happens that they were in the same situation. And the Highline Bridge in New York City is now one of the most popular tourist attractions in this city. And I think I better close before I pass out. But I want to leave you in the words that I don't think I need to explain who said this. But the quote is, "What ye do unto my brethren, ye do unto me." And thank you for your time and attention.
Hi, guys. Adam Trot, 531 West 6th Street, second floor. Last time I was up here, last council meeting, the YouTube video shows that I was cut off after four minutes. So I'm going to time this one to make sure I get my five. I have a handout for all seven members of council. There's a couple of things addressed by those handouts. I'll call your attention the one that starts off with the Civitas press release. There continues to be a misunderstanding about Erie CPR and the Grego letter. And what I'm giving you is the actual documents. The Grego letter, my fax, email, rather, rebuttal that same day. And then after the letter went public, our press release the very next day, on February 22nd. We were hiding nothing. We didn't commission this thing. It was out of respect for the person that got the thing done to make sure that that person controlled when it went public. But immediately later that same day, I sent this email to the person that got it done and rebutted the things. That same person, two days later, voted for the public hearing. And that person admitted, "You know, there's facts bouncing around. We need a public hearing to get them straight." That's all we've ever asked for, was to get the facts straight. So this whole false rumor about, "Oh, you did the thing and you kept it quiet", that's just plain false. It was never real. And we find ourselves, this is the toxicity of the kind of falsehoods from City Hall that we have to deal with all the time. We're talking to people, and we say, "Hey, we want the public hearing because we want things to be transparent." And they say, "Well, jeez, you weren't transparent with the engineer's letter." It's like, "Come on. Can we please be a little more decent about how this process is handled? Please." So you have that. The other thing you have, we continue to tell you the story that the demolition team does not tell you. And that's one of the big things we keep doing. We keep clarifying falsehoods that are put out by the demolition team. This handout with the map is about what they're calling pedestrian enhancements. Now, if you're a young mother with young children, if you're a kid going to school, if you're someone who's trying to make it to church on the other side of the tracks on time, you want the most direct route. And what's attached to this map are the actual pages from the LRK study that recognize this. They said two major things. They had seven pedestrian enhancements. Five were barriers. Two were actual enhancements. One was the sidewalk on the south side of 12th Street. The other was the 19th Street pedestrian bridge. This map shows you the desire line people use to get across the tracks from the west side of the Bayfront Parkway. And the actual distance is on there, and they're accurate. We measured them with a measuring wheel. These are accurate figures. The engineers never tell you that what their enhancements do is set up barriers that make the walk a half-mile longer, and they throw them into a very dangerous intersection at 12th and Bayfront. And those are two things they recognize right off the bat, that 19th Street needs a pedestrian bridge, and whatever you do, don't make them cross that 12th Street intersection at the Bayfront. But then, as soon as they got your approval, both those things are gone. I'm sorry. That is just unacceptable. And we're asking that both the newspaper and the council fulfill their role and challenge these falsehoods that keep going out. Now, you know, I applaud a lot of things the mayor's trying to do, but we have to be mature enough and good enough neighbors that when our neighbor is doing something very harmful, we can call them out on it without worrying that they're going to hold it against us and they won't be our friend. You know, we've got to cut that out. Erie deserves better. Erie needs better to move forward. And I'll tell you, the biggest shocker for me was when I read what one of the top advisors to the mayor said. The advisor who's advising him on technical things about the viaduct. And we all know who it was, because you all read the New York Times article. And it's not failing neighborhoods. It's not no one I'd want to live with or a house I'd want to live in, and it's not help these people escape. That is something that should upset you, not something on Facebook from some jerk that says, "Oh, you're no good." That doesn't matter, but when it's an advisor saying something like that, that's what should shock you. And so far, there's been no statement from City Hall about this. And that criticism is levied only against the four and the mayor's administration, because three of you in council are exempt because you already voted. Thank you.
Howdy. Kevin Pastefka, 722 East Grandview in the city. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the viaduct. We've been told that City Hall has done thorough studies. I see the big green binder up there, and the mayor has made statements at these meetings about the thoroughness and insistence on the demolition of the viaduct. And we're supposed to believe that. And then, the New York Times comes out last Monday, I believe, and there's a quote from, as Adam was just referring to, one of the members of the mayor's transition team. And I'll read the quote. Jason Wazork is the person quoted. He says, "I cannot find the type of housing with neighbors I would want to live with on the east side." And then he says, "We need to prepare people to move out of those neighborhoods." And I think that attitude is, needs to be called into question. And I think it certainly implies a certain, certainly disrespect, but it adds question, I think, to the whole credibility of, if that's the sort of counsel City Hall is seeking with that kind of attitude, and we're supposed to accept that attitude, how can we believe all the other things that are being said? I mean, right here, the credibility is called into question. And there's a answer, you know, a solution to that. And a public hearing is that solution, because that's where, and I mean, the vote was, what, four to three against the public hearing? And essentially, not against, but to table it. You know, maybe time to bring that back onto the agenda. Because, I mean, certainly if the solution is ultimately to demolish it, we go through the democratic process, we see that, we all understand it, and we understand where that decision came from, and we accept it. But as is, the facts are in question. And after that article I read, the attitude is in question. So the solution is to air it out publicly. And with, what's our word, Art? That's it, accountability. So, again, there's plenty of time to do that still. Thanks.
City Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'm Susan Perry, and I live at 418 Strathmore Avenue in Mill Creek. I've come into CPR kind of late in the game. I wasn't involved for the last four years, but I've been involved for the last, I'd say, six or eight months, and I am now impassioned to save the bridge. I have this resounding question, and that is, what is the worst thing that would happen if we had a public hearing? I just, I know we can't ask questions, you can't answer, but that's really my question. What is the worst thing that would happen? It would satisfy people who are just so frustrated and unhappy with how things are going, and it would give them a voice. And I just don't understand why it can't happen. I really don't. We need a public hearing. I could say that over and over. And I want to echo a lot of the people who spoke previous to me for saving the bridge. I think they did a very good job of pointing out many, many aspects that need to be addressed. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Steve Cooley, Jr. I live at 2149 West 21st Street, Erie, PA. My concern is about dumping across the streets from our house. One side of the street is residential. The north side of 21st Street is commercial. And lately, Russell Standard, they are bringing their compost from over across Pittsburgh Avenue, which is over in Mill Creek, over to the Erie side in front of our home on 21st Street and Pittsburgh Avenue. And there is a lawn care company there that are taking their compost, bringing it over there. They're digging holes and dumping it in there. And we would like to see this get stopped before it gets too far out of hand here. We have made contact several times with the code enforcement, the street department, and other agents here with no effect. They've put a gate right at 21st and Pittsburgh Avenue there, which is already congested. We have the big trucks there hauling dirt and other compost over there, carving even a bigger jam there on 21st and Pittsburgh Avenue. They have the credit union on the south side of Pittsburgh Avenue, 21st Street, Boyer Rental on the north side. So what they did, they came up and cut in another gate, probably 15 or 20 feet wide there, right in front of my house, like this is going to solve the problem. And we cannot get any satisfaction from that. And we cannot get any satisfaction from that. And we want you to know that there, we don't know what is being dumped there coming from this lawn care company there. I noticed there were lots of hazardous material being dumped there and unwanted pests. We could be, we are dealing with unwanted pest problems out there, rodents and things and all. And I've got a feeling that somewhere down the line there, we could be dealing with termites in our neighborhood there because we don't know where they are bringing these compost from. So we are very concerned about that. And I would like for City Council to look into the situation and see what we can do to sort of compromise these issues out there. We want to be good neighbors to the people across the streets, but we want them to treat us nice too out there. We have a patio that we can't even sit out in the summertime because of all the debris flying around in the air out there. My grandkids come to town, I can't even let them play outside. The kids like to take their little dishes outside and sit down and eat out there on the deck out there. We can't do that now because of all the debris is flying around out there. So I would like for someone to please address this situation and see what can be done about it. And we will greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. Madam President, can I ask what hundred block you're talking, I know you said 21st and Pittsburgh, what hundred block is that in the city?
In the 2100 block from St. Peter to Pittsburgh Avenue, sir.
It is the 2100 block of 20?
21st Street.
All right, thank you.
West 21st Street, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Stafford Curry. I live next door, 2155 West 21st and Pittsburgh Avenue. And to go along with Mr. Cooley also, that's the word, we've been bombarded out there with Russell Standard leasing their property from Boyer Rental, which tore down several buildings on their own property because they're already housing groundhogs and who knows whatever other vermin that were making their way across the street, which, you know, we, you know, I appreciate the fact that they did all of this, okay? And I'm hoping that they did it because code enforcement come down there and did their job as they were supposed to. Now, after that's all said and done, they turn around, they lease this property to Russell Standard, and we got pretty much a rock quarry and whatever else across the street from our house. I'm talking 50 yards maybe, if that. They don't hose it down during the summer or anytime, so when the wind blows, you pretty much got a dust storm there. You can't open your windows, you can't sit on your patio, okay? If you have a decent car and it's outside, you know, it's getting dusted out. Actually, if you don't mind, I do have some photos here. If you're willing to take a look at them, please. Picture worth a thousand words. And also too, there's a traffic problem there also. If any of yous have ever been on 21st and Pittsburgh Avenue and whatever part of the day, they tried to get out there to go down to the plaza or up towards 38th Street or 23rd Street, it's impossible to get out, impossible. Not even just with a train and regular traffic. Don't be a pedestrian on foot trying to get around out there also. Now, these triaxle trucks are coming in there. Now that they're sitting there on the road, actually, which I don't believe there's been a traffic study done on, it's a two-way, two-way street. Now, they come out there and they put these markings out there and made it a three-way street. How do you do this? Okay? And also where they cut out for the driveway to go in and out of this place, there, all that stuff that's falling off their trucks, it's falling on the street, and then it's getting washed down our sewers. What is that doing for us? Okay? And also, as Mr. Cooley said, you can see where I've taken pictures, and some of those trucks are coming from right across the street on Mill Creek over into Erie to dump their stuff. Now, whether it's concrete or whatever else that they're doing, they're adding fiberglass and whatever other kind of materials to this concrete, they're crushing it up, sitting there across the street, blowing in the wind, who knows who's, you know, inhaling all that stuff coming in through our windows and doors. Also, when you have those triaxle trucks sitting there, they're burning diesel. So when that diesel was sitting there and they're burning it and it's coming through our windows and doors, you know, we're inhaling that also. There's parking lots you've been around and whatnot that have big signs that says no dieseling allowed. So if it's not good there, it definitely can't be good in our area either. And I've been out in this place since 1968, before Russell Standard was even a thought, okay? And Mr. Boyer, old man Boyer, is probably, you know, turning over in his grave because his kids allowed all that to happen out there. He always took care of that place out there. And I'm sorry, you know, I don't think that the city's treating us right out there, okay? A traffic study, if anybody would have did a traffic study, they would have seen that you can't do these things out there. It is very, very hard. Matter of fact, plastics moving up the street. I'm pretty sure they got plenty of employees that ain't making the work on time, okay? Because of not only the train, but when you've got big trucks like that backing up traffic and, you know, it's more of a hazard also when people are getting out at 3 o'clock, 4 o'clock, okay? Where do you have to go? Where can you escape from 21st and Pittsburgh Avenue to get home to your family at work or to wherever it is that you have to be? There's nowhere to go at all. So, you know, you're pretty much stuck like Chuck, there's nothing that you can do. But it's also not fair to all the neighbors that are out there and that have been out there as long as I have and not as long as I have, you know, for their families and their kids. That was always a good neighborhood to bring your kids up in and whatnot like that. And now, you know, we're saddled with something like this. Matter of fact, if I wanted to build anything out there whatsoever, okay, I'd have to have a permit. I don't see a permit there posted, no place for them to do anything whatsoever out there. Now, I haven't heard or seen anything from the D E P, none of them people at all. And I thank these folks for hearing me and made the pictures speak, you know, what it is, I can't say. But you're more than welcome to keep the pictures. They'd like to read those, we'll make more. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mohammed. Erie Metro Black Pages. I want to thank Mr. Cooley and Stafford, who I had in preschool when he was three years old at the King Center, for waking everybody up because it looked like you were falling asleep as we're talking about the viaduct. And I want to get your attention. I'm very concerned about the viaduct. As I told you, I'm the publisher of Black Pages founder, and we represent the east side. I'd like people to stop coming down here telling you that black people are not concerned, that poor people on the east side are not concerned. They're very concerned about what's going on. Maybe they're not speaking up, but that's the hopelessness and the apathy. And I'm very concerned about the redlining. The redlining actually started 80 years ago, all of you are probably very aware of that. I remember being a little girl living on East 11th Street when they herded black people to the projects and to the east side. The redlining was already an issue to be addressed somewhere down the line. The viaduct just happens to be on that area on the east side. There are other viaducts throughout the city. Why were they not maintained? Why was it not maintained like those places? Why? I heard the mayor say that he prayed to God. And I'm going to turn to Mr. McDonald now, who, in case you don't know, is my uncle. God is not pleased with that. He said, "You have the poor people, but you also, you all were elected to represent the people, not to law it over them, not to be God over them, but to represent the people." CPR is asking for a public hearing. What is the problem with listening to the issue? And I'm a member of CPR, so I joined in asking, but I think the city should be sued for not maintaining the viaduct. I'd like to introduce you, Adam Glover. We've got a millennial working with the Black Pages, and he has something to say. Thank you.
Adam Glover, 38831 Pennsylvania Avenue. I'm overcome with emotion. That's why I do have to write my points down so I can kind of get through on time. I do represent Erie Black Pages at this time, and I thank Sister Mohammed for helping us. She's passed the torch down, and we're right now going through a transitional phase amongst the generations. And it seems that if everything is not being passed down torch-wise as smoothly amongst every, everyone in the generations in Erie. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but I heard a young lady talk about being in her comfy home on the west side of Erie. Well, I grew up on the east side of Erie, and I worked my butt off to get my family to where I felt was comfortable, not necessarily in that area where every morning we crossed over that same viaduct that Erie CPR is talking about to drop off two East High Warriors. The same viaduct got my father to the Soldiers and Sailors Home, Third and Ash, all the way from Lynwood and Downing. That same viaduct is still standing today, may not be able to hold the traffic with cars, but for someone like me, I'm looking at a perfectly fine pedestrian bridge with a little TLC. I often talk about how I am a native son, born and raised, very proud to be from the city of Erie. Never been arrested, never did anything of the crazy things to get arrested, worked my butt off, I'm a collegiate first year. I was able to go to school and then experience some things like walking through the mountains of Toxico in Mexico, being able to go out the country and go places and see things. And then with my life, I had options. Living in South Florida, I watched my fellow classmate win a Super Bowl, and I'm cheering from, again, another comfy living room in West Palm Beach, Florida. However, it was a little too fast for my small growing family, and I said, "I need to come home." I come home, my wife and I start businesses because, you know, the work here wasn't able to sustain us, so we had to become entrepreneurs. And that's what we did. And we worked our butts off, and we worked hard, and we worked with anyone in the community who needed help, we worked. I'm overcome with emotion because I realize that I've worked for comfort and may have forgotten about the places that I've come from. And I'm hoping everyone in this room hasn't forgot about the rest of Erie. I'm discouraged by Facebook comments. Yes, I'm a millennial, so I'm often on Facebook. I tweeted Roland Martin this morning. I'm often discouraged by how people who are not from the area talk about the area. I played basketball, skinned my knee because I had crazy bike contraptions in that area. And I'm saying, if we're this disjointed and spread out, then I can't be proud to be a native son anymore. The Erie CPR is asking for a public hearing, two words, public hearing. If anyone was in trouble or there was a disagreement at all, I think that would be a great route to go. Let's hash things out before we do something to make someone else not feel like they are a native son or a native daughter anymore. Thank you.
Father Jerry, Presquero, 921, East Avenue. They say the best way to win arguments is to try your best to reason with people. What do three smokestacks still standing on the Hammermill Paper site, the large smokestack standing in front of the Blasco Library site, the Mill Creek Drift Catcher Zoo Train Bridge, the Mill Creek Tube under the city of Erie and the McBride Viaduct have in common? First, they all serve as an important landmark. Second, they all serve a functional purpose. Third, they are all made of concrete and steel. Fourth, they all have a history spanning many decades. Fifth, they are all built better than anything that could be built today. Sixth, they are all structures that people at one time or another said, "Get rid of it and tear it down." Seventh, they're all still standing today. Eighth, they can all be rehabilitated. The three smokestacks help boaters on Lake Erie find their way to shore. The large smokestack in front of the library will be incorporated into a new hotel complex, maybe as a lighthouse or a tower. The Mill Creek Drift Catcher Bridge carries a zoo train locomotive and up to six passenger cars across Mill Creek at the Erie Zoo. The Mill Creek Tube runs two miles underneath downtown Erie, preventing floods for 100 years now. The McBride Viaduct, the vital connection between two major areas of the city, it's worth saving, just like other structures. When it comes to the McBride Viaduct, we have heard, there's no money, there's no interest, there's no support, there's no need, it's not safe, it can be repurposed, it's redundant, there's no way, there are better things to spend money on, it's beyond repair, it's too late, there's no need for a public hearing. None of those arguments are true. Where there's a will, there's a way. All we're asking you to do is find a way. Remember the Commerce Building, the majestic 14-story building that stood on 12th and State? They demolished it. And now, they want to rebuild downtown Erie? This is the United States of America, land of the free, home of the brave, men, women, and children fought for 20 years to have a bridge connection on East Avenue and commercial streets. I'm glad the fight continues on. It should never be easy to destroy an 80-year-old bridge connection, no way, no how. That's not American ingenuity. Look at the brand-new pedestrian bridge built in Florida. It collapsed. That's modern engineering. And the McBride Viaduct, it's still standing after all these years. That's because people took pride in what they built years ago. Historical structures are better built than most modern stuff today. There are substantial errors, omissions, and problems with the way the McBride Viaduct transportation study was conducted and the study itself. There is a need for a public hearing. If you succeed with demolishing the McBride Viaduct, widespread government corruption will have won the day. Save the McBride Viaduct, and the people's voices will finally be heard, and the future of the city will be set back on the right track to attract new residents, new businesses, new investment. Remember, the city of Erie was never built by tourists. It was built by residents and businesses. Don't ever forget that. Tourists come and go, residents and businesses pay most of the taxes here. And believe it or not, I'm a taxpayer too. Thank you.
John Schubert, 2413 East Avenue. I've been on, as most of you know, on the CAC Committee since the very beginning. I probably know as much as anybody around about what's going on. I've also attended meetings in Mill Creek about the Mill Fair Road Bridge. At the Mill Fair Road Bridge, what's really interesting is, they told us, if we were to rebuild the bridge, it would be approximately $7 million. That's for traffic, the viaduct, that is, that it would be $7 million. They told us to put a brand-new bridge here, 1,170 feet, that it would be $25 million. Isn't it interesting that Mill Fair, they built two bridges for $12 million? And that's the point that I'm trying to make is, too much information that has been given to you folks and to the mayor from the previous administration is erroneous. Like I said, I've been at every single meeting, I know what was said and what happened and that. We have, like I said, they say to repair, like to keep the bridge up, it would be approximately $5,000 a year. How much does it cost to pave one street in the city of Erie? I heard upwards to mill and repave it, that it'd be close to $50,000. I don't know if that's true or not. Maybe you could check. Maybe you could check, but $5,000 a year, I'm sure you can't repave the street in the city of Erie for that amount of money. You know, we spent, again, $80 million, or going to spend totally $80 million on the EMTA. I wonder if there's 4,600 people, is the amount of vehicles that were going over that bridge, McBride Viaduct. I wonder if there's 4,600 people actually riding those buses for $80 million and that, basically because they didn't want to have two places, a building over here and a building over there. And that building, quite frankly, isn't as old as the bridges. The, you know, another thing, we're spending close to $80 million on the Warner Theater. You know, it's a fine project and that, but again, we had 4,600 vehicles a day going over that bridge. And as far as the kids, the very, what I think Adam missed was, he said there's a half mile for the kids to walk, you double that because they have to go and they have to come. And the shortest distance, if you start by the bridge up there on the east end of it, the kids would have to walk, in all kinds of weather on the Bayfront, approximately a third of a mile. Can you imagine a third of a mile in a storm, raining, snowing, icy? I really can't. You know, again, I mentioned this before, the mayor, Tulio, he put the Transitway Mall in, but again, he had enough sense to take it out. The guy that come up with these bumpouts, "I'm driving down the street and I see these yellow poles there so that you don't drive over," and I've seen some people drive right over them. Again, some people made a decision that I don't think was very good. The, you know, you talk about low voter turnout. I've had, how many people, and they come up to me and talk to me about the bridge and that, they said to me, "The politicians don't care, they don't want to hear. They have their own ideas, why go out and vote? Because they're going to do what they want to do anyway." And I think most of you know that. When you have a voter turnout in a range of 30%, 25 to 30, that's really bad. And like I said, the attitude is, people don't really care. My, like I said, the big thing is, we don't want to give up the right of way. I don't know how important you folks think that that right of way is, but that portion going over the railroad, if we give that up, our future, our kids' futures, they're done. I had a city official tell me, they said, "Well, you know, Mill Fair Road, that's where the people are moving." He said, "We don't want to get too involved in the city," and that's the gospel truth and that. So it just kind of makes me wonder, you know, these people need, and I'm a private citizen, I'd like to have a public hearing. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. I'm Lisa Austin, 1262 West 9th. The engineer's report distributed at City Council was initiated by a member of City Council. After someone from City Council contacted the engineer, I, on behalf of Erie CPR, also reached out seeking his vetting of Adam Trot's $1.35 million bridge fix for non-vehicular use. We understand that the councilperson met with the engineer at the bridge. Adam Trot's proposal, his estimate, was designed to clean the storm drains, fill the potholes, and remove the spalling concrete and seal the surface so that the bridge will remain safe for pedestrians and bicyclists. However, the engineer's brief statement that was issued to the councilperson and to me on February 5th was based on envisioning the highway, highway use for the viaduct. Since Trot's estimate was focused on non-vehicular use, the engineer's statement was invalid. Thus, also on that same day, February 5th, Trot issued a short response to the councilperson, to another person on CPR, and to me, outlining the engineer's mistaken analysis. The councilperson did not respond to this email. However, the councilperson's vote on February 7th in support of a public hearing indicated, we thought, understanding that Trot's explanation of the engineer's report was invalid, that it was invalid. Now, while the CPR officers were ready to discuss the engineer's report when it arrived, Mr. Trot felt we should be respectful of council and allow them to take the lead, especially since they had direct contact with the engineer. On February 21st, the copies were shared at the City Council, and once it was made public, we immediately sent out a press release outlining the problem with the engineer's report. Again, we thought all of this would be covered in a public hearing. However, it was framed in the local paper and by some on council as a deliberate attempt by viaduct supporters to suppress information. This isn't the case. Please take note on some other issues here. The mayor's staff member was wrong when he told the mayor in a meeting about the viaduct that the folks in the barber shops don't care about the viaduct. I've actually been to some, and I haven't met anybody yet who doesn't care, who doesn't want it to stay. Another member of the mayor's staff was wrong when she implied in an email to a resident that the walkability expert, Dan Burden, supports demolition of the viaduct. You may also recall that during a campaign debate, candidate Shember said, based on what he then knew, he would demolish the viaduct. But in follow-up remarks to viaduct supporters, he said he would not object to a public hearing. We were relieved because we knew a public hearing would bring out the facts and the viaduct would be retained as an existing asset. However, after the election, one of Shember's transition team members, an architect, urged demolition. The same advisor revealed his prejudice against Erie's east side when he told the New York Times, quote, "I cannot find the neighbors I would want to live with on the east side," and, quote, "We need to prepare people to move out of those neighborhoods." The mayor is clearly getting bad advice and inaccurate information. He was wrong when he said the viaduct would cost every household $250, and he was wrong when it was, he said it was beyond repair. He was wrong when he said that Pendout would only give a little over $600,000 to fix the viaduct. In fact, in an email, they said they would be able to pay up to $1.26 to help fix the viaduct, if the city wants to fix it. In addition to these things that are wrong, the mayor keeps using terms inaccurately, redundant. While the bridge is redundant for vehicles, there is a four-lane highway on the next block, it is absolutely necessary for people who walk and bike. A round trip to East Avenue is one mile shorter using the viaduct. The viaduct doesn't have the highway noise, the pollution, or the dangerous intersection and blind spot. The other two are structurally deficient, it sounds scary, but it just means it needs some repairs, not demolition, functionally obsolete, sounds scary too, but this just means the viaduct is too narrow for tractor-trailers, not for bikes and pedestrians. Again, these are very legal terms. ADA compliance is another thing that keeps coming up, it doesn't have anything to do with a bridge that needs to be maintained. And then again, many meetings, we haven't had a single public hearing, that's what I'm asking for tonight. Yes, we know it's late in the game, but the time is always right to do what is right. Please organize the public hearing. Thank you for listening.
Council File Number 15617, Official Ordinance Number 8/2018, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $15,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure thereof, Donation from the Star Athletic Club. By Mr. Winarsky and seconded by Mr. Mersky, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15617, and now known as Official File Ordinance 8/2018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. City Council pass Official File Ordinance 8/2018, finally, by a 7 nay 0. Council File 15618, Official Ordinance Number 9/2018, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $8,000 from Unappropriated and Anticipated Revenue and Providing for the Expenditure thereof, Donation from the Star Athletic Club. By Kathy Schoff, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, that Council File Ordinance Bill Number 15618, and now known as Official File Ordinance Number 9/2018, be finally passed by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council pass Official File Ordinance Number 9/2018, finally, by a 7 nay 0. Council File Number 15619, An Ordinance Appropriating the Sum of $100,000 to be received as a transfer from the Economic Development and Recruitment Project to the City of Erie Business Development Fund for the purposes of job creation, investment, and economic development in the city of Erie. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that Council File Ordinance Number 15619, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. City Council read and adopt Council File Ordinance Number 15619, by a 7, nay 0, on first reading.
This one?
That'll take us into new business.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to move the balance of the agenda.
I have a second. Are there any separations?
Madam President, I don't know what point, we at one time had the BIU contract for extension on the agenda as well as a software program. To waive the rules to get that back on, what would we?
We'll have to waive the rules for that, so we'll move the balance of the agenda, and if there's no new business, we'll move into the waived rule.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you.
Any separations, then? All right, then, moving the balance of the agenda. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. So that'll take us to the waived rules. I don't want you back. First waived rules would be the resolution to extend the contract for the BIU. So voting to waive the rules, Ms. Allen, Mr.?
No.
Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon.
No.
I also would say no to that.
Mr. Witherspoon?
No.
Mrs. Arrington? This will pass 4-2-3, so we'll go on to read and vote on the BIU contract. No amendments?
Let's read it.
Okay.
Yes.
By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Mersky, resolved by the Council of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to enter into a one-year from April 1st, 2018 to March 31st, 2019, contract extension with building inspection underwriters of Pennsylvania Inc., 1805 West 38th Street, Erie, at the current rates for inspection services for the city of Erie's rental program. Discussion?
Madam President, I ask for this to be waived tonight just so we could have a little more discussion on it before we just do not vote on anything here. Waiving the rules on this doesn't mean we have to go with the full year. We can put an exception in and change the length of the contract or the extension of the contract. What I think, we all have the same purpose here to, we want this to be done, run right, correctly, and with transparency, and I think where we're at now, we did have an audit that was presented to council within the last week and a half, as well as the administration or the management, as well as BIU. And what I'm proposing here is possibly shortening that length of the extension to possibly nine months to year-end, and then with that, following up with a study session, not within two weeks here, let us, all parties involved, digest some of the recommendations from the audit, work with the city controller, work with the Public Work Director, work with code enforcement, and all come to a conclusion, some ideas to make sure some things are implemented or are being implemented. My thoughts are, maybe have a study session first part of June after this audit has been dissected and digested a little bit, and see where we are at that point, and see if any parts of that audit are being implemented. I believe within the last year since we have extended this contract, positives have come out of it, maybe not as a quick of pace that we would all have liked to seen, but there are, there are and have been improvements. So I guess at this point, where I'm feeling it, this is, let's give it a chance. I don't know, I know a six-month extension has been put out there, a one-month extension has been put out there. I don't think, after conversation with our city controller, that that'll give viable time to what the audit that we had presented to us can take place. So I'm asking my colleagues on council if we can give this a nine-month extension instead of the year, to the end of the year, rate at budget time, and see if things are feasible at that point, if things are being improved, if any delinquencies are being collected. But with that going forward, just seeing if anything that the audit has brought forward to us as a council, if anything is being done about it. Thank you.
So, did you make a motion? So, did you make a motion?
I'd like to comment.
I think I'll listen for, if we can all make, if everybody wants to make their comments, but I would, my motion would be to extend the BIU contract to, at a nine-month extension instead of the year, and follow up from that at that point.
Madam President, can I make a comment at this point? The president of City Council has suggested that we do a study session before approving this, and that's the way I still think we need to go. In the caucus session, I suggested that not only that we need a study session, but that we need a subcommittee to really dive into the audit. There are two of us on council who are new. I went to the library on Saturday so I could read the old stories about the rental inspection program. I feel that I don't have enough information on hand to vote even for a nine-month extension tonight. I think that there are some really, some interesting recommendations in the audit. The public has not had a chance to view the audit. I think it's really important for the public to be able to look at this audit. We got an email today from a woman who owns three properties, who has many concerns about the rental program. She pays her inspection fee, so this, I'm not taking sides one way or the other as to who should be the person, I'm sorry, the contractor who gets this contract to do these rental inspections, but I think we not only need to look at the revenue questions, but we need to talk to the administration. This is to make sure that people are safe in their rental properties, and so I want to know if it is, if the current program as it exists is fulfilling that also, in addition to the fact that there's outstanding bills that, there are fees that haven't been collected. So I stand with my idea, which is not a motion, is that we should have a study session and that we should form a committee to look at this and report back on deadline. I don't think, I mean, it doesn't take me that long to digest this thing. I've read it already. I've read it a couple of times, and I think within a month, we could have come back with some recommendations, considering that a year ago, City Council voted for a one-month extension before renewing the contract. So, that's all.
Mrs. President? This is, this program's been existence for about ten years at least. It's been subject to complaints, neglect, and we've fielded all these complaints. And understand that whether we do, we extend this or not, we're still going to have these study sessions. We have to. We commissioned that study last year when I was president for a very good reason, there were too many questions. We got the results, and even I understand that we're not prepared to take this back in-house right now at this point. So we're going to have to give them some kind of extension. But I still stand by a six-month extension. Why? I think it's time we put pressure on us, yes, right here, the council people. If we give them a year or nine months, we're going to sit around like we did last year. We're going to find an excuse not to tackle it. Six months will put us under the gun, and in six months, in three months or six months, we'll look and see what progress we made, whether we added the fines, the penalties, whether we looked at the abysmal collection record that was allowed to stagnate for the last few years. They can't even tell us how much was owed before that because the record keeping was shoddy at that point. There's the questions about who's waiving fees, who gave anybody the power to waive fees. Remember that council? It was council that started this program, not the administration, council. All things start here legally. The administration is merely a function of us. We give them the tools to administer a program, but it's time that we step up and take a stand against this program. People are complaining out there. Just today, we only got, Liz and I know, you must all got it, the letter from that one lady, I got at least two or three, plus it listened on the street. And I took a tour with BIU one day, unannounced. They didn't know who I was. And I want to tell you, if that's the kind of inspection that's out there, I got questions. I got nine questions at least, and I'll probably add three, four more before this night is through. I'd be in favor of six months, but not nine months, not a year. We need to push ourselves to get this done, just like we had a problem with garbage bills. We got a future problem with another department, which we'll tackle later, but right now, we can't afford to have three hundred thousand dollars or any amount dangling out there when we have to go to the taxpayers, time after time after time, or make the cuts necessary to keep the budget going. So it's time we called this program under review. It's been a long time coming, and they knew it was coming. So to stick this on us at the last minute again is unacceptable. Yes, we knew the contract is up, but it's up to them to tell us and remind us. We're not to, we don't have the staff here to monitor all these things. We're part timers. So now I'm saying six months, let's put ourselves under the clock, put them under the clock, let's start getting the things done. I'm not going to wait till June to have a study session. There'll be another problem. We got to start quicker than that. We got to start, it's probably going to take two or three meetings to solve this, to take the necessary steps, but something has to be done. So I'd be in favor of six months, but not a month more.
Anybody else?
Madam President, I was, reading the audit was an eye-opener in a few things, but in many ways, these were things we knew all along. Kaz and I have been, and many of us on here, and many of our predecessors, heard these concerns from people in the community. Out of all the contracted services in this city, I received the most complaints about BIU, both with the rental inspection program and with the subcontracting for permits, for approval of permits. Their customer service, in my opinion, and I know that's something the mayor's focused on, is subpar, and I think that when it comes to council receiving answers, the study sessions that I've had with them, that we've all had with them, I've left there feeling dissatisfied that questions weren't answered. There were circular answers, and nothing really concrete was accomplished. So, but that being said, I spoke with the mayor today, he was at the state legislators' policy hearing, and he did ask for some time to allow the administration to address these recommendations and these concerns, and I'm okay with giving him that opportunity as a new administration to allow him to do that, to make these, take these recommendations, work with his staff, and see what he can come up with. Concurrently though, I think that we do need to tighten it up on our end legislatively, as well as the ordinance says. And Kaz, I'm in favor of what you said, exploring some type of penalties for those that deliberately do not register for the program, intentionally try to keep their rentals out of the program by hiding them. That's a concern, because it's a safety concern. We have to always remember, the original intent of this was because there were two house fires in rental units and people died. And to allow the rental inspection program to expire, to prove a point, and potentially put people at risk, I'm not comfortable doing that, but I am in favor of an extension. And as we move forward though, this program has to be tightened up, so I'm really urging the administration to take this audit seriously and address the concerns that McGill Power Bell has brought with their recommendations and their concerns. Couple of things that stood out to me was the lack of transparency, the lack of accountability, and the lack of record keeping. The other thing that concerns me is the second part, which we're going to be voting on, is that we have this technology in the city hall with our software to use this data and have the data in-house, but we're subcontracting out for a software for this company to use, spending more taxpayer money when we have it in-house and we have the ability to put an add-on to what we're doing. And then we would have the information here. The whole thing just, it needs to be tightened up, and so this has to be done. I mean, without a doubt, and Kaz, I agree with you that for too long, we've allowed, we didn't know what the extent of the problem was. Now that we have this audit, we know what the problems are. Now the tough part is finding the solutions that don't require additional staff or additional monies, but also that keep people safe, because ultimately, we always got to come back to, why was this ordinance written to keep people safe?
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I wanted a study session as a newly elected official. You had suggested it, and I was for it because I am unaware of a lot of the things with BIU, so I wanted to learn more.
Yes.
Just briefly, as regional director for the state audit in general, I have over seventy-five auditors, CPAs alike, in fourteen counties that I'm responsible for. And when I reviewed the audit, number one, it wasn't a financial audit, it was basically a performance audit. There were no findings. When my auditors detect findings, that's bad. They make recommendations on how you can do something better. And when we make recommendations, then we must give them time to address and tell us how it's going. So the six months, we have to keep in mind, all the recommendations, some we will not see results in six months. It may take a year, but they can give us a progress report on what they're doing. So I say a study session would be a good thing, and almost a must, where we can ask those questions on where are you going, what's your recommendations, to solve the recommendations. So a study session is necessary. We have two new council people, and the rest of us, we aren't in tune to everything that's going on. I got a lot of auditors out there, and those are the ones that pay my bills, so do I read everything that comes through? No, I don't. Do I have time? No, I don't. So I must give Kaz and Jim and President and everyone else a call, did you read it? What do you think? So I have to build some trust in my colleagues as well. So the recommendations, we take them, they have to correct them, they must address them. And we need to be satisfied with the recommendation, but they need time. They need time to correct and address. And again, two or three of them may be done in six months, and we may see a progress in nine months. But I guarantee you, we will not see a results in all the recommendations within six months. But I agree, we need to set a timeframe.
Madam President, if I may ask, Ms. Dankovich, what would be your recommendation as controller as to an appropriate timeframe for this?
I think by the time you gather the information, I mean, you have a new administration you have to talk to. You're going to have to talk to code enforcement, and you'll have to talk amongst yourselves, review that audit, see what the recommendations are, see where we want to make changes. And we've also looked into advancing our computer technology here at the city, so that's another point that we need to start to get some answers about that, too. So, I mean, if you, I would say by the end of the year at budget time, once you've gathered all that information, have your study session, make some decisions there on how you want to proceed, before budget October, then you can maybe set your decisions into place and be ready for the beginning of next year. But I don't think you're going to see much progress in a month. That's really impossible at this point in time, without talking to the, all the people that you need to address.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. President, I only said six months. I hope you don't look at that as a termination date. I said six months because it keeps pressure on people, and in six months, we look and we just say, hey, you know what? They need another six. That's fine, we did it before. I don't want anybody to think that six months, I expect to see everything done. I know it won't be, because it's going to take longer than that to do some of the legal issues, setting the fines or penalties if we do that. But I want to, I just think that six months keeps everybody on their toes, both sides, and if in six months, we like what's happening, we extend it another six. Even I know it's probably not going to be done by the end of the year. Nobody expected that, but I just think six keeps everybody a little bit more on task. I think the longer time you give people, we find an excuse, oh, we can wait another week. No, I like to put pressure. It's been festering for too long.
Madam President?
Yes.
I think within that six-month period, with all the meetings that we need to have with the administration and with code enforcement, we can do all that in six months and then sit down.
And decide.
And then decide what we're going to do. That gives us six months to get all the information that she just explained to us, and we have to be serious about this. We have to be serious about this. We can't play with this, because six months from now, we're going to be saying the same thing. And we have to document it, we have to put it on paper, and we share it with them. Here's what we found, here's our recommendations, where do we go from here? And at that point, we can approve or disapprove. Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could make a suggestion, Kaz, you're the liaison for code, right?
Pardon?
You're the liaison for code?
Yes.
This would fall under their office?
Pardon?
This falls under their office, correct?
Yes.
I do like Ms. Allen's suggestion of having a committee to kind of spearhead this, and because you're passionate about this issue, you know, maybe the best solution would be to extend it for the nine months. Kaz, take the lead on it with the committee, two subcommittee people, and then you guys could take the lead on it and schedule the study sessions, bring the necessary people in, and then go from there, and then we'll have recommendations ready. Obviously, we need to work with the administration in, because they're the ones who are going to bid it out, and so the parameters of that bid have to meet the requirements of the ordinance. And also, we need to check with, is our ordinance being followed? You know, sometimes we write things and then they're not followed, in practice. In theory, they're supposed to be that way, but then in practice, they're not addressed that way, so we have to have that, too. Would you be amenable, I don't know if you would be amenable to that, you taking the lead with your committee and then scheduling those meetings for us, and then we can move forward, and that gives us the window that we need, that the recommendation of the controller has, and then I think it satisfies, everyone's ideas get put into one path forward.
Madam President?
Yes. Yes.
You have the power to assign them to that.
Do I have to make you do this, Kaz?
I will, I will accept the burden. I will, I will accept the burden. But I will be a pain. I will warn him upstairs. I won't, this is not going away.
Well, thank you, Kaz. So, do the motion for nine months stand? Is that the motion we're going?
You moved it, I'll second.
You'll second?
Yes.
To amend the, to nine months.
Ready for the vote?
Do we have to vote on the amendment first?
Okay, well, we'll vote on the amendment by Mr. Winarsky, seconded by Mr. Mersky. Proposed amendment to extend the contract with BIU for nine months until the end of 2018. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. Okay, and now we'll vote on the resolution as amended. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This motion will adopt then seven to zero, as amended. And the second wave rules will be the license software agreement with Executive Pulse. So, voting to waive the rules on that. Ms. Allen.
Wait, wait, wait. Oh, with rules, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I made a mistake.
Okay, all right. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. Okay, by Mr. Kotowski, seconded by Mr. Mersky. Resolve by accounts of the City of Erie that the proper city officials are hereby authorized and directed to enter into a one-year software license agreement with Executive Pulse Inc., 11 East Fourth Street, Erie PA, to provide web hosting, system maintenance, and normal and customary system upgrades for the rental licensing software package with an annual fee of $23,000. Discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
I would like to, if it's amenable to everyone, I don't know, I guess Ms. Stankovich maybe this question is for you, or maybe it's for the administration. Would, I don't know if BIU would prorate it for nine months? Or do we have to purchase it? Executive Pulse, yeah.
We pay them a upfront amount for the, for the initial payment, and then it's broken down into payments from there. So, I believe we paid them ten upfront, and then every month from there, it was a thousand dollars.
Okay.
I don't know how they would be willing to break that up.
Okay. Well, I mean, I think it'd be appropriate to have it match the length of the contract, and then do it all at once. But I don't know what the group thinks. So, I'll just open that up for discussion.
Anybody else?
No amendment?
I get, I think at the end of the. You get what I'm saying, though? I mean, it's like.
We're going to need it.
We're going to need at least nine months.
I guess, can we ask our, Ms. Controller, should we try to prorate it in our?
With the adminis, oh, sorry.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's up to the administration on whatever contract they worked out with Civic Pulse. So, I don't know. I don't have the, the contract that they discussed.
Madam President. Would the administration be amenable to having that conversation with Civic Pulse, and seeing if we can get a nine-month contract to, so that it aligns with the contract for BIU? They're the ones that use the service. We don't necessarily, it's housed through them. Just ask them. I guess that's all, we're asking you to ask them, I guess is what we're asking.
Yes, we can look into that and get that going for you to investigate that. Unfortunately, I don't have the contract.
Well, then, if that's the case, if the administration's amenable to it, then I'll make the motion to amend this for, for nine months. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, hang on a minute. Okay, by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kotowski. Is it seconded by Kaz? Did you second that?
Yes, I did.
Was that to extend that, as you did, the BIU?
To nine months, to match it.
Okay. Okay, we've got a proposed amendment to vote on by Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kotowski, to extend the software licensing agreement with Executive Pulse for nine months until the end of the year. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. And that motion will pass seven to zero. And then we'll vote on the resolution as amended. Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mr. Mersky, Mrs. Schaff, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mrs. Arrington. This motion will pass or adopt seven to zero. And that'll take us to committee reports. Madam President?
Start with Mr. Mersky.
Thank you, Mrs. President. Just a few things to report. I attended the House Policy Committee meeting yesterday at the Teamsters Union Hall, hosted by Representative Harkins. And it was regarding public safety and worker safety for public employees. It's also known as the Jake Schwab Bill. Jake Schwab was an employee at EMTA and tragically passed away in an accident there. And unbeknownst to me at the time, and since then, we've discovered that government employees are not bound to the same OSHA standards as private employees. Representative Harkins, there are twenty-six states that do have legislation to protect their public employees with the same OSHA standards. Pennsylvania's not one of them. Representative Harkins is leading the charge for that. I'm pleased to report that this council is the only municipality in Pennsylvania that has endorsed Representative Harkins' plan. And also Erie County, the county of Erie, has also passed a resolution supporting the Jake Schwab Bill. And it's working its way through the committees now. And they did have a hearing on that, at which point I expressed our consensus that we, we agreed to support that, that bill per our unanimous vote. And then today, I also attended a policy meeting, at which Mayor Shember and County Executive Kathy Dahlkemper, along with other municipal leaders throughout Erie County, were speaking with one voice to the legislature in Harrisburg, talking about some of the things that they're working on, including the A Street corridor, both in the city and Mill Creek Township. And also, some of the things that the, they were working on, Mrs. Dahlkemper spoke about the community college and the need for state funding for that. And it was very nice to see all of our leaders speaking with one voice. And the people in Harrisburg, our state reps that came up, a lot of them were unable to make it because for the first time in, the roles were reversed, and the snow is in Philadelphia and in the center of the state and not here in Erie. So, but the ones that came were from Allegheny County and Center County, and they made it up. And a lot of the ideas were things that we've been talking about, the innovation district, and the downtown revitalization. And to speak with one voice, it was really good. Also, on our agenda here, I just wanted, we waived, we passed these things, but I think they're important. We're applying for a grant for $277,000, multimodal transportation grant. This is through the Department of Economic and Community Development. And this is for improved lighting on 10th and 11th Street between Sassafras and Peach. We applied for this one last year through, in the grant cycle, and we didn't receive it. So, this time, we're applying again. We tightened up the application, and we're hopeful that we can get that. And this is to support the Velocity Net Project, to increase the lighting down there, and the streetscape. And we also put in for another one. It's just the same, this one, though, is for the, it's through another pot of money for improvement. So, I want you to know that this administration is going after that state money, and trying to bring it back to Erie, and I think that that's important. Also, in here, just one more thing to report, is that there's a new business in town, this, it's called, wait, I just had it here, Room 33. It's on 11th and State. And we voted for an outdoor dining area for them. And as always, we make sure that, that there's safe passage on the sidewalk for pedestrians, including, and I thank Mr. Witherspoon for this, including our people with disabilities. So, we made sure that there was enough sidewalk easement for two wheelchairs to go through at the same time. And I want to thank you for bringing that up and making sure that was part of the record, and making sure that people with physical handicap, physical disabilities were able to go through there. And with that, we have a redevelopment, not redevelopment, I'm sorry, Conventions and Authority meeting tomorrow, and I'll report on that at the next meeting. That's all for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Before I get into my committee reports, I want to address three things in regard to the Viaduct comments tonight. One of them, and I've heard it before, I saw it on a video, in which people say.
Sorry.
I'm done, no, no.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
That that bridge was built to last 100 years. I've said this several times here, but maybe if I tell you who wrote this story in 1966, maybe it will have more weight. This was by Dave Stout, writing for the Erie Daily Times. Dave Stout later went to work for the New York Times. He went from Erie to the New York Times. And since everybody seems to think from CPR that the New York Times has the last word on the Viaduct, maybe you'll believe this reporter's words from 1966. "The recent appearance of a two-foot hole in the McBride Viaduct located on East Avenue and running south from 12th Street is a small but grim reminder of a serious problem hanging over the city's head." 1966, that bridge was crumbling, along with other bridges. The bridge is not 100 years old. It had to be rebuilt. It was crumbling after 28 years. It had to be rebuilt in 1971. I also want to refer to the, one of the people at the podium talked about the toxic atmosphere, and blamed the toxic atmosphere on us, and on the city administration. The other night, I was looking at Twitter, and I saw a late-night tweet from somebody from CPR. It was a retweet by the former mayor of Milwaukee, who, by the way, came to Erie in 2015, gave a lot of really good ideas, including talking about sidewalk dining. This is what the former mayor of Milwaukee tweeted, that was retweeted by a member of CPR. "I know you won't let up, and the bridge will be saved. Mayors who take orders from traffic engineers are losers." Who has, who is fond of calling people losers? I'm not going to say who it is, but this is the word loser being attached to our mayor. I objected to that. I also object to my integrity being attacked with the claim that I am the sole person who asked structural engineer Hank Grego for an opinion. I emailed Hank Grego. Hank Grego met me at the library. He showed me his cellphone. He said, "I have an email here from somebody named Lisa. Do you know her?" She emailed me and asked me for an opinion on the McBride Viaduct. Our emails came to the structural engineer at the same time. I own the fact that I asked Hank Grego for an opinion. The other person also asked for an opinion. All right, now on to happier topics. Kathy Schaff and I attended the Pennsylvania Municipal League Training for Newly-Elected Officials a week and a half ago. And we are ready to use the template suggested by James Hunt in his book, The Amazing City, in which he gave us, it's a really simple formula. A stands for attitude, M stands for, what's M stand for?
Motivation.
Motivation.
No.
A sta, A stands for attention to detail, Z stands for zing, I stands for inclusiveness, and I think, I would like to also change that to innovation, N stands for neighborhood, and G stands for greening. So, Kathy and I have talked about this, and we're trying to figure out, what's our city zing? He really emphasized to us the need to maintain a positive attitude. So, I think we're going to be looking for some ways to reach out to the community. The administration is, is doing brown bags and going out there. Mr. Witherspoon has suggested that maybe during the summer, city council takes some of our meetings on the road. So, I think, I think we're going to see what we can get going in that regard. I attended the Metro 100 session of the Jefferson Educational Society about the strategic plan for Erie's public schools. And Kathy Rosdick, the city planner, suggests that maybe we could look at aligning the goals that were suggested in Erie Refocus with the five goals that the city school district has come up. And isn't that great to have people working together in unison? I attended the sewer authority meeting on Tuesday, and the managers there will be preparing a capital improvement plan, which will be presented at a special meeting in May. I attended Blighted Property Review Committee meeting on March 14th. Went to Neighborhood Watch Council last night. Michael Outlaw gave a great present presentation, stressing that his job is to listen to citizens, and stressing that is, that is Mayor Shember's commitment as well. He said, "It's not going to be us versus them." And I think we all need to accept that declaration. He said, "There's going to be a meeting at Mercyhurst on April 21st, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. It's called Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships, and there's going to be representatives there from eight different identified groups." And back to the training we got at the Pennsylvania Municipal League. One of the big takeaways was the need, as I said, to focus on the positive. There's been some really positive things happening in our community in recent weeks. Governor Wolf was here last week for a roundtable with the African-American community at Climate Changers. Young Erie professionals are revamping their leadership. We had the story in Sunday's paper about the entrepreneur launching French Street Farms, and she said she got really good cooperation from the zoning department in the city in getting that ready. There was a program this week revitalizing the Rust Belt, in which a photographer from Detroit came here, and he said he really loved the resilience in Erie. And I'll save the rest of my positive stuff for my session next week, or next, two weeks. Thank you.
Come on, Mal.
Madam President. I yield the balance of my time to this.
Jim?
It's all about having a little fun once in a while. Very brief, did attend a tour of the EMTA facility with our new mayor, Mr. Shember. He had yet to tour the Phase One of the project. So, he was very amazed, as I still was after touring it a second time, what has happened down there on East 14th Street, and the development of Phase Two, where we're at with the new part of the facility. And we're still probably a year and a half out. Unfortunately, a little charter issue delayed it, but hopefully, we'll keep moving forward from this point. And like I said, it was very impressive. The mayor was impressed, and there's some great possibilities down there on East 14th Street. The only other thing I had, the Erie Otter season has come to an end after a championship season last year. It ended a little early this year. But as everybody knows, they have been an asset to this community, and the ownership, the players, and naturally, the citizens, the fans. citizens, the fans, for coming out and supporting them. Like I said, they are an asset to the community, and they will have some better days ahead after this year. So it does look promising. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Madam President, I did have a great time at the conference that Liz and I went to, and I would like to elaborate it on more another time. It is getting late. I had to work 8:00 to 6:00 on my regular job. So I apologize for my tired look tonight. I went to the PUC hearing and listened to the people, and I also addressed my concerns at the PUC hearing. I went to the Council of Women's Organizations on Monday. They had an event at the Bel Air Clarion. It's Women's History Month. And Erie has a lot of women's organizations for empowering women. And I think, Madam President, you had mentioned that we want to make sure that the public has a list of all the organizations that they can use if needed and reach out to them. Last night, I went to the Commission, the Human Relations Commission and Advisory Board meeting. They're working on an ordinance that they want passed by Erie County Council, hopefully in April. I attended the Planning Commission. Ms. Sundberg, that was yesterday, that Liz and I went to. And they're still working on the Port Authority plans for the Bayfront. And I had to put my two cents in there because there's an issue of not having as much parking down there and possibly more shuttle transport. And I also mentioned that I want to be able to just relax down there and not attend all of the little shops and things that they may plan because, being raised in Erie, I love Erie, but I don't like to spend a lot of money. So hopefully, there's going to be. I went to the Water Authority meeting, and they're in the process of passing a bond issue. And I went to the Jefferson Society's Erie School District plans that they asked us for input. And I was really glad to be a part of that because, as an educator of over 35 years, even though I've been at a Catholic school the whole time, I'm an educator. So I was able to talk about the main points at our table as to what the Erie School District should be looking at and their issues at the public level. Thank you.
We attended the ECOG study session two weeks ago. It was well-attended by Moss Sala and Sid Goldstein from the city, where we reviewed bidding processes for the year. They're constantly looking for communities to add to that bidding list for needs that, you know, as administration, if there's anything you want to add to that, work with Sid or Moss on that. They're always looking for new things to add that they can bid out at a greater savings. I attended the Park and Authority meeting, and Park and Authority comes under a lot of scrutiny, even tonight. I want to remind people that the Park and Authority does not cost the city any money. It costs the users money. We formed a Park and Authority many years ago to do what the city at that time could not or would not do, which was to improve the parking situation. So what we do, we blame them when they do well. And they do do well. They were responsible for tearing out the Transitway Mall, not Mayor Lutulio. Mayor Lutulio didn't have the money, nor did the city at that time. When they built the new baseball park, that was made possible by the parking ramp across the street, which was matching funds to secure the money to build the ballpark. So when we pick on them because they want to build a parking ramp, remember that one of the largest employers in the city of Erie is building a tower down there, which we voted on today on some easements. That tower will not be able, is going to provide more jobs, and there will be not enough parking down there for the people visiting and the people working there. It's merely a study at this point. But that study and that money to build that ramp will come out of fees used by the users. And if it can't make it, they just won't build it. I met with the Towing Review Committee that's been recently resurrected, and I was very pleased with Mr. Bibbs, who's a member of that committee. We had our first two people that challenged their towing, and we had a very spirited debate. But it's good, and I think after watching that board work, I think I'd like to recommend that we institute another two boards, if it's legal, to take care of some other issues we have, that the public feels like they're sheltered and not given a chance to protest. One of them could be the Rental Review Board. Police Pension, I met with them, and they're doing very well. Their fund is increasing in value, and they're meeting all their obligations. The Blighted Property Review Committee met. They had a very light agenda. Zoning, I also met with them. Actually, Ms. Allen took my place, as I had three meetings that day. I want to thank her for filling in. And brings me to the grant money. People today were talking about, oh, if we could only take the money from the parking ramp and give it to the McBride Viaduct. It doesn't work that way. The government that gives the money makes the rules, and there are different funds for different purposes. Highway funds cannot be commingled many times with housing money, just like when the airport was built, people said, "What a waste of money." But you can't take that money and commingle it and make a ballpark out of it or something else. Because if you don't take the money, it's definitely going to some other community that has a need for it. And in many cases, that's why I admire this new mayor that's actually going out there to get the money for various programs. And if there's any money out there for roads and bridges, I'm sure they'll find it. But in the meantime, if we don't get these grants, understand there's only one other place they come from, and that'll be the pockets of Erie taxpayers. And Jim, I just remind you that while the Otters had a slight demise, we have another franchise that's doing very well and flying very high, Erie Bayhawks, which are on the cusp of getting a playoff berth. So, you know, I hope you discover the other sport that's in Erie and join me at a game sometime. And, you know, I'm glad to meet you at a hockey game some night. But yeah, the Bayhawks are doing well, and not to mention that our Sea Wolves are not too far behind. For a community our size, I think we're well blessed with pro sports, amateur sports, and collegiate sports. So on that note, I'll end. Thank you.
I, too, attended the governor's roundtable at Climate Changers to listen to some of the issues in our community with the minorities. And it was an interesting discussion. So, you know, I want to thank the governor for taking the time out of his day to come and listen to some of our issues and concerns. And also, to all my fellow Viaduct people, I agree with you. I'm all for saving the Viaduct, whatever we can do. I hope we can do. I'm not sure if we can get a public hearing because they already voted for the demolition, but I will try. Okay? That's all I can do, is try, you know, because I'm in agreeance. What's the big deal about listening to what you all have to say? You know, because to me, it's a public safety issue, and especially when you work with kids all day, every day, and you're around kids, my grandkids, my kids in my mentoring program, that's a big issue, you know? So I would like to hear everybody concerned. So I will try. I can't promise anything. All I can do is try. And that's it for me. Teresa, do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I just want to address the letter that I gave all you council members and caucus, just to let you know that all the reports that are required by the state for the pensions have been filed in a timely manner, which they were due by the end of the month. So just to keep you on top of that. And the quarter hasn't quite ended. We've got another week here in the end of March here. But just to let you know that as of yesterday, the pension funds were up over $283 million. So from the end of December, we were at $271 million, and that's about an increase of about $12 million in a quarter. So just to let you know about that. But we'll have our meeting in May, and they'll present that quarter to us. And let's see, but as long as the market keeps going away, it is doing good. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Either one of you guys have anything you want to say?
Yes, real quick, as you probably guessed, I'm not the mayor. But I just want to introduce myself. I'm Aaron Longkey, the Media and Events Coordinator for the mayor's office, and just wanted to send the regrets to the mayor. He couldn't be here tonight. He had a prior engagement, but plans on being at the next evening city council meeting in April.
Aaron, wasn't he out telling jokes tonight as a fundraiser?
He is. He's at Laughter the Limelight at Junior's Last Laugh. So he's one of the public officials and other news personalities, raising funds for a couple organizations, NAMI and the Mental Health Association.
I was just mentioning that because I thought that maybe the meeting would have gone better tonight if we had all opened with a joke. But maybe next time.
There's always next time. Just a couple of things on my end. First, I just wanted to let you know the mayor's news conference is at 10:00 a.m. on Thursdays. Council is always welcome to attend. Tomorrow is a situation where directly following the news conference, we do have three police officers being sworn in at 11:00 a.m. in Room 500 at City Hall. Again, council is welcome to attend that as well. Moving forward, just an update on my end of things. We're currently accepting applications for the position of Digital Media Coordinator for the administration. This position will largely be responsible in investigating strategies for social media, the website, and the city 1024 channel as well. So those applications are coming in. We have over 60 right now. So we'll review those resumes after that process closes tomorrow and we stop accepting applications, and we'll move forward from there. And that's all I have.
The deadline for application is tomorrow?
I'm sorry.
Deadline for application is tomorrow?
I'm sorry, it's Friday. So at the end of Business Day Friday, the application, we posted on social media, indeed, and there's been a couple articles in the paper about the position. So yeah, by the end of the week here, we'll be moving on to the interview process.
Thank you.
Attorney Bates?
The only thing I have to say, and I mentioned earlier, is that Ms. Allen and I have, she's the liaison with the solicitor's office. We're going to start meeting on a weekly basis with the idea of trying to increase communication between city council and my office. I think that'll be, it was a really upbeat conversation. I'm pretty excited about having that because I'm new, and I never know what you want to know and what you don't want to know. So I think if Ms. Allen and I meet on a weekly basis, it'll be an extreme positive. So we'll start doing that, and hopefully, that'll make it fun for everybody. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, everybody, for staying. It's been a long day, and this adjourns our city council meeting.
City council adjourns at 10:10. Mrs. Arrington, Ms. Allen, Mr. Kotowski, Mrs. Schoff, Mr. Winarsky.
It won't be a dark hall.